Our second public hearing is to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance amending chapters 8.24, section 8.24.200 of the San Bruno Municipal Code relating to private sewer laterals.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The purpose of this item is to introduce an ordinance that's consistent with the City Council's new sewer lateral policy that it adopted by resolution on April 14. And let me just take a second and read that resolution to you. It's only three sentences long. What it says is, "As of the effective date of this resolution, April 14, the city will continue to respond to requests for emergency sewer service from residents. Where a city-approved cleanout is accessible, operable, and will not damage city equipment, staff will provide ongoing maintenance services as necessary. In circumstances where the private lateral is damaged, staff will direct homeowners to repair or replace the private lateral at homeowner expense." So you'll recall from the last meeting when we talked about this that about 25% of homeowners do have a conforming cleanout. The other 75% do not. The new policy in this resolution, and that's reflected in the ordinance before you tonight, doesn't affect the 75% of homeowners that don't have an approved cleanout. They won't experience any change whatsoever in city service. As for the 25%, the city will still continue to respond to their private sewer lateral emergencies, and the city will also continue to provide ongoing maintenance services and advice about their private lateral. So those two things remain unchanged. The only change for those relatively few people is that if their private sewer lateral is damaged, it would be their responsibility to repair or replace it. Now, of course, if any work needs to be done in the city's right-of-way, for example, the city would issue an encroachment permit, as it has done before, for similar repairs. And those conditions and specifications in the encroachment permit would protect the city's interests in its streets and sidewalks and its infrastructure. But you'll also recall that the city is now partnering with a warranty company to offer coverage for the repair and replacement of both upper and lower sewer laterals, regardless of whether there's a conforming cleanout or not. That program is voluntary, and residents may choose to sign up with that particular company, with a different company, or with no company at all. The ordinance in the staff packet that you have in front of you mirrors the resolution that you adopted on April 14. There was one minor correction. There was a typo in the resolution. We'll make sure it's fixed. It's the insertion of the word "city-approved cleanout." Those words were left out of the resolution. But that's in the ordinance before you tonight. So if you do introduce the ordinance this evening, we'll bring back the adoption for you at a subsequent meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if not, then to request that the mayor open the public hearing and take any testimony.
Any questions for Mark this time? Ken?
I'm not sure about Mark, but I see Jim sitting close by. The city-approved cleanout now. I know that staff reporters time and again stated that those that have installed the city-approved cleanout have had the advantage of, you know, possibly having a lower lateral repaired at city's expense. I question this 25% because, correct me if I'm wrong, it has been a requirement for any home improvement or specific type of home improvement to install a cleanout at the property line. So, and that's from, in my experience, that has been a requirement, Building Department requirement, or a Public Works, Public Services requirement for many years. So I guess my question is, what is now going to happen now? Are you going to require it still? Is the city going to require these cleanouts during various projects, or is it condition of various projects now that it's more advantageous for the property owner to install a cleanout versus the city really requiring a cleanout, if I'm making myself clear?
Well, let me defer to Jim on the technical question. I think that it has always been advantageous for the property owner to install a cleanout, both under the old policy and under the new policy. Certainly, under the old policy, it was advantageous because they could get a significant amount of service at no cost to them. It's still advantageous under the new policy because then they'll continue to receive the maintenance services that the staff was providing. As for the number and the distribution, I don't have an answer to that. I don't know if Jim does or somebody else does.
I'm not sure I can answer your question, because I think it's a plumbing code question, but it's kind of dovetail to Mark's comments. When there's any work done, obviously, the homeowner, the plumber, would probably recommend a cleanout, then not have a cleanout, and then to follow plumbing code, I'm sure they have to put the cleanout in the proper location, depending on their lot layout and so forth. So, but we have made no recommendations in any, or any changes to the plumbing code or the cleanout installation process at all.
So, okay, so if it's safe to say that if it is not a plumbing code requirement, it's quite possible that, you know, a resident doesn't necessarily have to install a cleanout at the property line?
If it's not according to plumbing code, then I don't know if I can answer your question.
Yeah, I was just sort of digging whether or not it was a city policy. Because it used to be plumbing code requirement to have a cleanout at the house, on the exterior of the house. And it's been my experience through the City of San Bruno that they want a cleanout within feet, a few feet of the property line, front property line.
They want access to the sewer line.
Yeah, and that is not common in all cities.
We do know that people have put cleanouts, and they aren't in the setback, so they aren't city-approved, but there are cleanouts so that they can access their line.
So we can get the information for you. Unfortunately, the specific answer to the question about whether that is a requirement implemented by the City of San Bruno that is not otherwise captured in the plumbing code, we can review a little bit and get better information to you. The reason for installing a cleanout, in addition to what the city attorney mentioned earlier, has to do with the ability to access the sewer lateral. Anybody on any property needs to, or is benefited by having the ability to readily access and attempt, as necessary, to clear, inspect, or otherwise manage the sewer lateral. And that's the reason for a requirement.
Any other questions of staff at this time, before we open the public hearing? All right, this time we're going to open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to address us on this issue?
You may want to hold the vote on this until the next meeting, so the city manager can get you the information that Councilman Iber asked for, and the city manager said they could get it, but it was not available now. I'd like to emphasize that a vote for this ordinance is a vote to deny a benefit the citizens have been enjoying since 1986, that the city provided, and can remain in place simply by adjusting the amount per month. And a vote against this ordinance at this time would leave the benefit in place and give you the opportunity to consider in more depth the value of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Russ Steinschreit. So I don't have a proper cleanout, and since Mark said this is only going to affect a small number of people, which I don't know where, a small number of people is 2,500 people, 2,500 residents, which is a quarter of San Bruno. So that's number one. I think that you just can't forget about the 25% of the people here that do have the proper cleanouts and that have had this going on. Number two, does anybody know how many cities actually put the sewer lateral on the residence from the property line into the street? I mean, is this common on the peninsula, or is this very uncommon on the peninsula? We do have, I do know from different people, we do have the second highest water rates on the peninsula, my understanding, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do see us constantly here raising stuff on the residence. And I ask the people here that work for the city, I don't know how many of you live here, but I wonder if you lived here, and you had a piece of property here, and you kept getting these rates that you guys keep giving to the residents, how you guys would actually feel being on, sitting in that chair instead of sitting in this chair over here. So I just ask you guys tonight to use your conscience for your vote, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just staff, do we have any idea of the number of cities in the peninsula that have this ordinance that we have before us this evening? I know there are a number of them, but I don't have the count.
We presented last year to the council what we call a white paper, where we did a study. It's been studied before, different agencies and what they've done. You know, Daily City is one that we've talked to quite a bit about what they do with their sewer laterals, and they're one, our program's kind of modeled after theirs. But different sewer agencies and also cities, it kind of runs the gamut. But in talking to the state, one of the things they said was that a lot of the agencies are trying to do this program where the laterals are costing them a lot of money and time, and they're trying to, you know, focus on their mains and their main wastewater system. So it just, it runs the gamut. I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but we had a pretty extensive report that we presented last spring to the council.
All right, thank you. Ken, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I stated, what I, my research from, and stated at the last meeting, is that Redwood City has clearly stated that the lateral from the property line to the main and the street is the city's responsibility. I verified that after the last meeting, and it is clear, it's up to date. Just went down a line, San Carlos has a similar statement saying that the city owns the lower lateral. Then I was very surprised to see that just last October or November, that the City of Milbrae, who pretty much about the same time had their dealings with Bay Keepers, dealt with the sewer laterals, and did change, did adopt an ordinance, but also to state that they are still responsible for the lower lateral, and that, and that too, I believe it involved a cleanout and an aggressive campaign to make sure that the residents helped to maintain their laterals. So just in a brief research online, I found three, you know, significant cities in our county that have clearly stated that lower laterals are the city's responsibility and will maintain that.
Through the chair. Michael?
I wanted to, I also looked into a lot of that stuff, and I actually looked a little deeper. And if you look at the way their code is set up, the cities that did take ownership of the lower laterals require, in most cases, not only a cleanout, but also a certification of the lower lateral before they'll take ownership. And for me, that was a big distinction in our program, the way it was set up, where we were just taking ownership regardless of the condition, whereas in a lot of these cases, before the city takes it on, they are certified. And I think that might be something that we could look into going forward, but I think that was an important piece that was missing from our program the way it was. So just wanted to mention that.
Jim Evangelist, DeSoto Way.
As far as us, our city having a different lower lateral program, it probably does have a unique program, but it's not, it's unique maybe in the Bay Area, but not throughout the country. There are many communities throughout the country who have been suffering under a cease and desist order like our city has for 20 years, that don't give up the lower lateral maintenance because it puts them in greater jeopardy when they do that. So they take an aggressive view of the lower lateral to help control I&amp;I, which is what we're, we've been under a cease and desist order for 20 years for. So if you continue, if you do vote this down, or vote in the direction that staff advises, just bear in mind that it doesn't address the I&amp;I chronic problem than we have in San Bruno.
Through the chair. Michael?
I wanted to clarify our action tonight, because I believe that last month, when we voted, the vote we did last month was to repeal the ordinance that basically said that the city took ownership. The action today is only to implement the piece that says that we'll continue the maintenance, right? That's the only action?
That's correct. At the last meeting, you repealed the 1986 resolution and adopted a new resolution that has the policy, the same policy, that's now in this ordinance before you tonight.
So if we were to not approve this ordinance, effectively, what would we be doing? Basically saying that we're not doing maintenance?
Well, if you don't approve this tonight, you'll still have a resolution that you adopted at the meeting of April 14, which embodies the exact policy that's in this ordinance. So I think if you're, if anybody, if you're inclined not to adopt the ordinance, you have to go back and start over and revisit that resolution, because all you'd have is a resolution that says one thing and an ordinance that says something different.
Okay. Not exactly sure I follow. So the resolution says that we're...
The resolution says that you're going to continue to provide emergency service for everybody, and it says that where there's a city-approved cleanout, then in those situations, you're going to continue to provide ongoing maintenance services. And then it says, with respect to anybody, if they have a lateral that's either, that's damaged or needs repair, it's the property owner's responsibility to repair or replace it.
Okay.
And that's what your resolution said last time, and that's what the ordinance says tonight.
Okay. So without this ordinance, then that resolution has no teeth?
Well, you still have a resolution, but you then would have an inconsistent ordinance on the books.
I see. Okay. I get it.
Anyone else?
Through the chair. Thank you. I just, I want to address, somebody had said something about not taking a vote tonight and doing a further in-depth study. And I want to remind everyone, we've been looking at this for almost a year. Jim was saying that we started with a white paper last spring, so we have looked at this. The subcommittee's met, I believe, three, three or four times. The council has received reports and met four times, five, six times, okay? I'm getting hand signals, six times. So this is, in my memory, and this is my 20th year on the council, this is the longest we've ever studied anything. So I think we've done our due diligence on that. I also want to remind people, we're only changing one thing. So if you have emergencies, everyone has emergency services, period, end of statement. Ongoing maintenance, if you have maintenance now, you still get maintenance. That doesn't go away. That's not changing. The thing that's changing is the replacement or repair of lower sewer laterals, and only if you have a city-approved cleanout. So 75, 50, however many people don't have a city-approved cleanout, they don't, they don't get it anyway. So there's been a lot of things saying how many people are going to suffer from, if we pass this, and on and on and on. And all we have to do is raise rates to maintain it, to maintain this program. We've talked about that. It would be, I believe, $9 a month per household to keep the program as it is, not at anybody, just to maintain it. So that's a lot of money. People were protesting adding 46 cents to the garbage rates. I think if we said we were going to add $9 to the sewer rates, we'd have many more than 53 or 57 protests. So I just want to bring those things up. And I'm, while I'm curious to get the answer to what Councilman Iber brought up, I'm curious, partly for my own thing, we did a major remodel on my house. We added two bathrooms, a whole second story, and there was no plumbing requirement to add a cleanout, a city-approved cleanout. So I'm curious to know what that program is. So anyway, but I don't think that has any effect on this, per se. So having said all those things, I'd like to, let's see, do I introduce the resolution? No, it's unordained.
No, the public hearing is still open, so, anything else? Would anyone else like to address the council on this issue? If we close the public hearing, it precluded from talking to us about this.
Okay. I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any action by the council or discussion?
Through the chair. Yeah, I do have a couple more questions, and it's a little bit off topic, but kind of looking at a bigger picture. I'm trying to remember, and I meant to go back, I just didn't have time, to look at what we're doing more globally about laterals, any private laterals. And I don't know if any of the rate increases that we approved, if any of those funds are dedicated to replacing laterals, or does this action, at this point, pretty much end our commitment to doing anything with laterals?
So...
With or without cleanouts? Because, I mean, we do have, we have a master plan that says, here's what we're doing to improve the sewer system in the city. And I'm wondering, I was trying to remember, I couldn't remember off the top of my head, and like I said, I didn't have time to look it up, but I'm wondering, are there funds that are dedicated now to investing in laterals, anywhere in the system?
So there will continue to be funds that come from the rates that are dedicated to the program that provides emergency response, as the deputy director and the city attorney mentioned earlier, that we will continue to provide response to sewer lateral issues, and we will continue to provide the cleaning program on a, that is, the regular maintenance program. What we will not provide is simply the replacement, repair of laterals that need to be rehabilitated, replaced, repaired. The only other, so those funds will continue to be part of our operational program. The other funds, and the only other ones that I can think of, and I'll ask Jim to provide any additional comment, are those that are dedicated to the program in the Sharp Park Basin that is a condition of our agreement, our settlement agreement with the Bay Keepers, having to do with a grant program to replace the laterals in that specific neighborhood. As we've reported previously to the City Council, the grant fund amount, $1,700, is relatively low, relatively too low to incentivize widespread action within the neighborhood to take advantage of the program. So we're in the process right now of doing some videotaping and additional encouragement to residents in that neighborhood where that program is effective. Those funds are also programmed into our operations. Other than that, there are not specific funds that have, that are dedicated to any ongoing programs, to sewer laterals, that I'm aware of.
Now, unless I'm mistaken, when the main, there was a main that was replaced in the downtown area, and I can't remember the name of the street, but there were a number of laterals that were replaced as part of that while the ground was open, I believe, the laterals were also replaced.
That is correct. Thank you for identifying that. In some cases, where it is necessary to disrupt and interfere with the normal functioning of the sewer lateral, and it is determined to be necessary in order to further the completion of the mainline project, and that has been the case in a few instances, in those cases, yes, the laterals are replaced as part of the project.
And so going forward, since we are going to do a lot of main-related work as part of the program that we're doing, there is a potential there that there could be other areas where we're possibly going to open up the ground, and we'll need to do some work in the ground, and it'll be advantageous, and it'll make sense to replace some laterals in those circumstances?
Yeah, and I guess the way I would describe it is, where it is necessary in order to complete the city mainline project in a cost-effective and efficient manner, that would be the criteria to evaluate whether the lateral then would also be replaced. And so it is possible.
Okay. And I&amp;I was brought up as an issue, and going back and looking at the consent decree, it did talk a lot about I&amp;I and how that continues to be an issue. So if we identified an area, like the area that you mentioned, where we're trying to encourage the residents to replace them, if we had other areas like that that were clearly identified as being problem areas, where there was a lot of I&amp;I because of deteriorated laterals, it would make sense in that case for the city to take on a project where those could be addressed, and there's nothing that would prevent us from using the funds that are approved for our overall project to address that. Is that correct?
I believe that, and we, Mr. Evangelist can clarify himself if necessary, I believe the comment and my understanding of the Bay Keepers' evaluation and the actual system situation is that the I&amp;I problem exists in large measure primarily because of the deterioration of the mainlines themselves, and that the work that is programmed is, I believe that Mr. Evangelist's comment indicated that there, the repair of, or rather, that the big problem in the system is I&amp;I, and that that needs to be focused on, and in fact, it is being focused on as part of the mainline replacement project.
Okay. Well, one thing that Mr. Evangelist did point out to me, it says in here that, it says, "Regional Water Board would consider the existence of such programs, especially those experiencing significant I&amp;I from private sewer laterals, is an important factor when considering enforcement actions for sanitary sewer overflow." So that's right near the end of that. So it did seem like they did have a concern with the laterals, and so a concern I have, of course, is then if we were not actively doing anything other than the point-of-sale thing, which, and I don't think that specifically addresses I&amp;I. It's going to address possibly clogs, we're going to video it, and if it looks clear, we'll certify it, but it's not necessarily going to certify that there is no I&amp;I unless we're doing some sort of extensive testing, which I don't think is part of what we, what our program includes.
Yes, so again, regardless of, through whatever means we might become aware of I&amp;I occurring in a lateral, that would be a result of damage or deterioration to that lateral, and that would become an item, certainly either that could be identified during a mainline project, it could be identified during our, as part of a response to a property. In all of those cases, our effort would be diligently directed towards informing, advising, assisting the homeowner in taking care of the problem, requiring it if necessary. So the diligence associated with getting those done, basically what we're saying is that would become the responsibility of the property owner, not the city, not that it wouldn't get done. In other words, it would still get done, and I think what we, I understand what the regional board's information suggests, the result is what they're looking at, is that there is a program in place to assure that private laterals and any other part of the system that is experiencing deterioration and the potential, or the fact of I&amp;I, is addressed. Our efforts would be to see to it that the private property owner completed those necessary repairs.
And I guess the part that I'm missing is where we're actually doing anything to identify those areas.
Do you have some comment?
So the Sharp Park Basin, as you know, is the location where the sewer laterals, we have a supplemental environmental program that we have to complete, and I think in the subcommittee, we talked about this at length. We worked with the Water Board to try to... We worked with the water board to try to determine, we're not getting a lot of participation, and we actually engaged in a conversation that went for several months about, could we take a requirement that's in the Sharp Park Basin for lateral replacement, and apply it elsewhere in the city where we might be able to replace laterals and get credit for it, instead of in the Sharp Park Basin? So we discussed at length that idea, because INI is sort of this big global, we know we have INI, where's it coming from? We don't have, right now, any knowledge of pockets of laterals, or groups of laterals, or subdivisions with laterals that have INI problems, except for Sharp Park Basin. We know that just because of the age and deterioration of laterals, in general, we're going to have INI. So we looked at that, how can we still do the program outside of Sharp Park, still get laterals replaced within the city, and do good for the system, and we aren't able to determine groups that would qualify? So we've looked extensively, we think over time, as we do more video inspection, and we may get more data that will show INI, that we can maybe target those, but because we haven't had much rain, it's really hard to do that. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but we've looked at the data we have so far, and we've tried to work with the water board to adjust the program, so we could get credit, because we don't want to have to write them a check at the end of the day, so.
If I could expand on your question to Jim, one of the things that I think the council member is looking for is, what do you do in terms of your normal operations to identify the potential for INI at a private lateral, and what do we do about it when we observe it?
Typically, the way we would find out about INI is through video inspection. If there's a problem in the main, we may often investigate upstream to find out what's caused a blockage, or what's caused an overflow, if that's the case. And if there's video that's available that shows maybe a damaged lateral, we can sometimes see in the mainline, a broken piece, or a lateral that's extended into the main that's causing a blockage in the main, we would notify the homeowner, we would work with them to come up with a possible solution. We oftentimes don't know if it's INI, we can just tell that the lateral's old and maybe broken at the main, and we may work with them to investigate their lateral further. It's fairly rare that we're able to make that connection to directly with INI, it's usually to damaged, a damaged lateral.
So we've made a huge investment in the system that's monitoring everything, and I'm wondering, can't we do some sort of baselining, and then, I mean, do we have any wet weather flow that we could compare to dry weather flow, that would tell us where, you know, clearly a lot of water's getting into the sewer only because it's raining, that would kind of give us an idea of areas that do have bigger problems?
Sure, yeah, we actually have flow monitors that show us, have that data, track it over time, but again, it's not necessarily isolated to laterals, it's more sections of main. This section of main has got flow that rises and falls, maybe too much, it's obviously an indicator of INI, but specifically where that INI is coming from, because it could be coming at every four to six feet, every joint in that pipe could be getting water into it, we can't really identify it. We know that there's INI, we try to identify, there's not just one location, it's usually the whole entire length of the pipe has got its compromise in some way, and that's where the CIP projects come in to go, that whole section's bad, we need to replace the whole section.
Okay.
And we have quite a few of those line segments that are in our, on our list.
Okay, and then once those are replaced, and we have clean mains, then if there isn't increase in flow in that area, we would automatically assume it was laterals at that point?
And we have cameras, back to the data, we have cameras that we work with residents, and if there is a cleanout, we can run a camera down the cleanout, determine whether or not, you know, the laterals compromise, and work with them on how to address that.
Okay, and just in your experience, in cases where there is a lot of INI, is it visibly obvious always, or not?
Um, you know, there's areas of town that have springs, so we have INI even though it hasn't rained much, we can kind of tell with the video that there's water coming through cracks, but again, it's usually not one location, it's usually a whole entire section of a mainline that's getting INI, and if we, if the whole main section's doing that, more than likely, the laterals in that whole basin, or the whole area associated with that main are also getting INI, so it's a cumulative effect.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, through the chair?
The public hearing is closed, Perry, I'm sorry.
There was new information that was brought up, we mischaracterized the state board's view on a lateral program.
Well, then, we'll address it to staff, thank you. Ken, you had something?
Yeah, I, there's two things I want to really make a point on, is that I can appreciate that the subcommittee has reviewed this X amount of times, and for X amount of years and everything, but just what the vice mayor and I have spoken of, is that other cities have come up with programs. We've never been confronted with another option other than continuing maintenance. There's never been any discussion about increasing that fee from sixty cents to some other amount, there's never been any discussion about a partial program, maybe a conditional program that, what was just spoken about, as far as installing a cleanout pending an inspection, you know, to make sure that we, you know, that we have laterals that are in good shape. We've just been requiring properties to install cleanouts, they can be installing cleanouts to bad laterals, both upper and lower. To me, I don't think we have a program, and to eliminate the city's involvement, other than routine maintenance or emergency involvement, is going to put all that onus on the property owner, of which no property owner, to this time, has any experience really in replacing a lower lateral. Everyone has experience of replacing an upper lateral. We don't even have data as to how many lower laterals in the residential areas have actually been repaired over time. We just know numbers. We're reacting to a budget, we're reacting to a rising amount of money that we don't, that the majority of this council and the staff doesn't want to pay anymore. So that's my problem, is that we haven't even come, even investigated another program. We've gone from providing a service to the residents, to not providing it anymore, and I just don't think that's right.
Anyone else? Someone said there was some new information that was addressed, I don't believe it's new, Michael, maybe you could speak on that briefly?
Well, I know there was some concerns about SSOs from the laterals that were reported, that, I think there was a concern that that was, that the reporting of private lateral SSOs was what triggered a lot of the complaints, was that the concern? Okay, so I think we have, we've touched on that before, in terms of, yeah, what triggered the, one more question, if I may. So if we were to ask for this to be rewritten, and take an opportunity to look at a program similar to what other cities are doing, and so that would be a program where the city would essentially take ownership of a lower lateral, on the condition that it were properly tested for INI, meaning that you would have to do some sort of pressure test on that portion of the lateral, that they put in an approved cleanout, and I think that would be, those would be the conditions, so that we have an idea of what that would, what that would cost, and of course, we could, we'd make some assumptions there on, you know, the adoption rate for that. Tab, I mean, is that something that would satisfy you guys?
It's definitely something to look at.
Okay.
Seriously look at.
Okay, so if we were to approve what's in front of us tonight, it's not going to preclude us from coming back and redoing this, I'm hoping it won't just go away and it never come back to us, because I think there is some interest in continuing some type of program. I still think that our program, the way it was implemented, was flawed, but I think that there are some opportunities to do something better, and I'm confident that with the investments that we're making, we can address a lot of these issues, and I think there's an opportunity for us to take on some of that work, like we've seen done in some of the neighborhoods where there is a clear need for a larger program, what we're trying to do up there in the basin. So I guess I'm looking for, from, you know, from over here on the side, are you guys looking for something to come back? Are you comfortable with what we have here? How would you like to proceed?
Well, my feeling is that what we're, what's in front of us today is nothing, it's just a confirmation of what's going to be provided. Ultimately, what, you know, what's staff, and what the majority of this council is gearing towards, is to dump it all on the resident, on the homeowner, on the property owner. So, and in case of emergency, or in case of possibly asking for some maintenance, they'll come out if you have a cleanout. If we are to be proactive in wanting to make sure that our deteriorating laterals, our deteriorating properties, you know, do get upgraded, I think we should have an incentive program to let people know that we want them to put a cleanout in, because we want them to know the condition of their lateral. To throw out an insurance policy that, I promise you, there's going to be complaints once that first, once that first claim is filed. To, you know, to think that there aren't a lot of lower lateral failures or whatever, as soon as that one lower lateral, you know, fails, and the city comes out and says, "Sorry, it's your responsibility now," all hell's going to break loose. I mean, this is not something that the community, that the residents are ready, are prepared to tackle. I mean, they, they know that they've got a stretch of sewer line on their property that they're responsible for. Now to start telling them that something's in the street is just, I just, we have to help them, we have to do something to educate them, instead of just walking away.
I know the comment was just made that we're, if this passes, we're dumping it on the residents. The majority of this city is already responsible personally for their whole line, from the house all the way out to the street. So what we're trying to do is make this system safer, and you said, the majority of this council doesn't want to pay for it. No, I don't want to pay seven figures, when in fact, we're bringing in thousands. It makes no sense to have everyone, or the twenty-five or thirty percent that have cleanouts to subsidize everybody else. I don't think that's fair either. So this is a step, and we've discussed this many, many times, I don't think it's right or wrong, I think it's a step going forward that we have to address, as part of maybe a comprehensive plan going forward, but we can't keep going back and looking at other ways to do things. A lot of other cities do the same thing as we're proposing this evening. Daly City, there you go, one of the major cities in San Mateo County, much larger than us, has a program similar to this. So as Michael said, I'm not against bringing something to augment this in the future, but I think we have to, we have to make the move, because this is just costing us a lot of money, and any more delay is going to cost us more money. So that takes the funds that could be used for these INIs and all the other things we've talked about, out of our hands. It's going into repair and replacement of things that should be a homeowner's responsibility, really should be, so that's my twenty-five cents, or sixty cents.
Thirty cents.
There you go. Is there any more discussion on this?
You're part of the twenty-five percent, so.
I am part of the twenty-five percent, right, exactly.
So, to reiterate something I said earlier, the programs that I looked at, Redwood City and South San Francisco, I believe, their programs, they take ownership of the lower laterals only after the inspection, but it still puts the burden of having a maintenance-worthy lateral on the homeowner, so it doesn't really change that much. So if we were to come back with something like that, would that be agreeable to you guys?
I think as the mayor said, to come back and augment something, I think, is good. I understand how it's going to go, and I get that, and I understand the reasons on both sides, when my colleagues have that, but just to vote it and say, let's now put it on the shelf, I think it's worth, I think we owe it, and I think we should, and so if something can come back, I think that it should.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion, action by the council?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
I think you have to waive the first reading.
Oh, sorry, waive the first reading?
It's already been read.
That's true, I did actually read it out loud, didn't I? But go ahead. Is there a second to waive the first reading?
I'll second.
Okay, motion to second to waive the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I will introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
No.
Councilmember Ibera?
No.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Through the chair, so in terms of a follow-up action, do you guys want to request that something go back to the subcommittee? Do you want to see something from staff? How do we proceed?
Yes, I'd like some of the questions that were asked, being answered, be brought forward, as far as what other cities and agencies offer, how we can have a proactive approach to some lateral, and I think that's the thing, is that we do want to make a difference, we want to have the issues that we had go away, but at the same time, we have to be engaged and involved, and I think that has to be part of the process. So I would like to see what other, I know both council members had done some homework, I'm willing to do some homework, and offer some of the information I may have, you know, that I can assess or learn, but at the same time, yes, I'd like to see staff come back with some of the questions that the city manager was writing down today as a first step, and some of the other questions that the colleagues had.
And can we bring that back in a couple of weeks, two weeks, or two, in two meetings from now? Okay.
Okay, so staff's going to come back with how to firm up the responsibility or non-responsibility of the homeowner regarding the lateral program that we have?
Well, let me, let me tell you what I wrote down, and make sure that that's consistent with what the city council is interested in. First is, what do other cities do? We can certainly conduct a more detailed evaluation of the twenty cities in San Mateo County, I assume that would be sufficient for the city council's interests, and then, secondly, some information and strategies to make our program as proactive as possible, to be more clear about how we are providing a proactive program, or what we might do differently or more, to provide a proactive program as it relates to the potential for sewer lateral INI, I think is the bottom line. Is that, is that correct?
And if I can add, I realize not all twenty cities have a cease and desist order, or do they?
A lot of them do.
Yeah.
But.
And we'd like, I mean, I'd like to get an idea of how, you know, maybe on this topic, on, you know, private laterals, private properties, how have, how have they addressed it? How have they addressed it, you know, and then possibly go into, you know, how they've developed those programs? Because like I said, I mean, Melbrae was right there, and they, you know, they were right on topic, and they developed their program.
And I know we've talked about incentivizing, and we've tried one area, you went up there and spoke to the community, went out there, folks went out there door-to-door, staff did, to spend the time, so, and it's offering seventeen hundred, if memory is correct, and obviously, that's not really working. So let's talk about what can work and what will work. I mean, I've brought up times and times, and maybe we don't have, you know, San Mateo's a larger city, but the program that they offer. Every time they offer it, you have a lot of folks that come out to take opportunity to it, and they do it quickly, because it runs out before the year is up. So in essence, they're doing something that they began a long time ago, and really, people do go out of their way, and they do it quickly, because that money runs out every year that that council budgets for.
Okay. I think another interesting data point would also be whether those cities are doing anything as part of their, if they have a master plan, if they're addressing private laterals and that, or their capital improvement.
So just to be clear, we have an item. So, just to be clear, we have an item scheduled for your next meeting on May 26 that would take the second action on the ordinance, for approval of the ordinance. This work effort is to, to do it well enough to satisfy, I think, the numbers of questions that the council has raised about what other cities are doing, is a little bit ambitious for us to be able to promise we can report back on the 26th. So, we would expect to bring that back on the 9th of June, which is your meeting, two meetings from now.
Okay. All right. That works for me. Okay. All right, good. We done with laterals?
Yes.